Hey, thanks for bringing us by the other day. That was nice.
Stay work.
What do you think to you? That morning I woke up, I'd run out of cigars and I was trying to figure out how it was.
Good morning. Worked perfect.
Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Bradenton City Council meeting, June 24th, 2020. City Council chambers will be open to the public. Everyone is welcome to attend this meeting. Social distancing and screening will be enforced. Any member of the public wishing to comment may do so at the meeting. Citizens may also submit their comments in writing to cityclerk@cityofbradenton.com or via voicemail by calling 941-932-9437. All comments must be received by Tuesday, June 23rd at 3:00 P.M. The mayor and the council may not receive your comments before the meeting if not received by this deadline. As always, we begin our deliberations with an invocation of the Pledge of Allegiance. Invocation this morning will be brought to us by Councilman Byrd. Please stand.
Most gracious and everlasting Father, we come before you this morning as a world in crisis. Father, we ask your blessings upon all of us. Father, as we meet here this morning for the decision-making process, we ask your blessings upon all of those decisions that they may be better for the betterment of our community. These and many other blessings, we asking your name. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Open the meeting. Disposal.
Good morning, sir. We have no proclamations today. And I need to let you know that we were hoping to bring a presentation this morning for the River Walk from Kimley Horn, and they had to reschedule. So what I'd like to do is offer to bring them back on July 1st, which would normally be one of your workshop days. We could turn that into a special meeting and bring them back at that time if you are so amenable to doing that.
Good. Thank you. Carl Callahan has an excused absence today, so he will not be with us. We're at the point of meeting of citizen comments. Citizen comments will be accepted at this time on any consent agenda item or non-agenda item. Comments will be accepted on public hearing items at the appropriate time. I have some people signed up to speak. And there's the yellow cards in the back in case you want to comment and bring that forward to me. First up, I have Gary Bogart.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council.
Name an address for the record.
There you go. Gary Bogart, 101 26th Street West, Ward 2. I'm here to to put my name in for the vacancy that's on the board. I've been a resident here in Manatee for 43 years, been married for 40, have three children. My wife's a lifelong resident. I have a four-year degree in business from State College in Pennsylvania. I spent 22 years in banking in this community. And the West Coast, Ellis Banks, Palmetto Federal, Palmetto Banking Trust, CNS, they're all names that are gone. But if you've been around a while, you'd know them. And I am the owner of Jake's Automotive Downtown, have been since 1998. We were a Small Business of the Year in 99. I'm a member of the Chamber of Commerce. We won Partner in Excellence in 2005. I'm a founding member and the first president of the Downtown Association. Many of you may remember that. We started out at a guy by the name of Neil Aspiratus with the Chamber. What a great guy. We moved the farmer's market from the old city hall to Main Street. Started the Get Down Downtowns on Thursdays to get people out of the office and on the street for our merchants. I've also served the city with Neil and at the mayor's request on the TIBARDA board that met in Tampa, looking at transportation needs for the West Coast here. I am currently serving on the police pension board and have been for several years. And I enjoy that very much, very proud of our police force, I'll tell you that. I'm a member of Kiwanis Club since 1984 and past president, Hickson Award winner. And amongst all this, I managed a international tractor company for 10 years out of the Czech Republic and flew back and forth to Europe and to northeast United States. No longer involved with them. They're a wonderful little company, but they're quite small. And I'm currently remodeling a house in my home in Ward 2. I'd be honored to serve this city, and I request your support and look forward to serving.
Good. Thank you, Mr. [inaudible]. Do they have any questions, Mr. [inaudible]? Thank you, Gary. Mary Ann Barnaby?
Good morning, gentlemen. My name is Mary Ann Barnaby. And I live at 216 21st Street West in the city of Bradenton.
You have a little more time, Mary.
That's enough. You have an extra minute.
I got an extra minute? That's good to know. As most of you know me, you know that I was elected to serve the Ward 2, in the Ward 2 area for the city for four terms. I have shared my resume with you. I have shared what I've been doing since I left the city council. I'm still serving our city. It's just in a different way. I've been on the board and president of Arts Center Manatee. And I am a very active member of the Service Club of Manatee County, which is the oldest women's organization in the city of Bradenton. And I was honored to serve as their grants chairman for a year that we gave out over $125,000 in grants in aid to charities that serve Manatee County children. I understand the ins and outs of serving as a city council person. I believe in service. And I think if you look at my record, you will see that I tried to always listen to the citizens, see what was on their mind, get their input on the decisions that were made by the council, and then voted the way that I felt would serve the citizens and would also satisfy my conscience. My first loyalty is to our citizens. And it's very important to me that you understand that. I understand this is a city appointment. But city council members must look at the city as a whole. They must look at the needs of the citizens and do their very best to serve all of those citizens. That's the only way I know to do the job. And that's how I would continue to do the job should you choose to appoint me. Public service is an honor. And I would be honored to be able to serve our community again as a city council member. I thank you for your consideration, and I ask for your support. Thank you.
Do they have any questions, Ms. [inaudible]?
Thank you.
Richard Bedford?
Morning, Mr. Mayor, City Councilman. How y'all doing today? Well, this is kind of interesting. Both Gary and Mary Ann are very dear friends of mine. So we have kind of a, you guys have a very good selection here to choose from. You have people who are interested in your community, been involved in your community, and want to move forward to help out. I'll keep this short and sweet because that's the kind of person I am. My address is 423 19th Street Court West. I bought the house in 1991. I moved here from Sarasota, originally from New York. I said I'd never moved north, but I did to come here to Bradenton. You know, you guys have been working very hard in the past, and we've seen it, on change and moving forward in the future. And maybe this is a time to keep that change going. Maybe it's time for a new set of eyes and ears on the board, a new point of view. And I'd like to be the person who does that. I don't know any of you that well. Commissioner Sanders, Councilman Sanders and I serve on the Chambers Transportation Committee, which I chair, so we've worked a little bit together in the past. But other than that, you know, we're not, none of us go out to dinner together and do any of that kind of stuff. So it's a fresh point of view, fresh way of going forward. One thing I've learned as an architect, contractor, planner, developer, everything that I've done in my life, is that you can always be better. There's no limit to better. You can't be perfect. You can't be right all the time, but you can always be better. And so we can be better as individuals, and we can be better as a city, and we can certainly be better as a ward. So I look forward to working with you, and I hope to join the team. And if you have any questions, I have copies of my CV that I'll leave later for you to review. And I look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Do they have any questions, Mr. [inaudible]?
Thank you.
Tom Woods.
Good morning, council. How are you, Mayor? My name's Tom Woods. I live at 2701 Riverview Boulevard, Ward 2. And I too am throwing my name in the hat for the council person. Part of mine, part of my thing is that I've, well, I was 30 years with the fire department nearly. And I, while I was there the last 15, I was a training officer. And I dealt with every department in the city. From the sign guy to the solid waste people to the police, of course, the fire. I don't know. I just, I had dealings with everybody and tried to, tried to keep everybody together. I know that's probably not the hot topic right now, but I think it's very important. I'm not, probably not going to say too much else, but I do would appreciate your vote of confidence. And I'm here to help the city. Thank you.
Any questions, Mr. Woods? Those are all the people that I have signed up. Anybody else that has any citizen comment? Anybody else who wishes to address the council? Anyone else?
Back there, Mr. Mayor.
I don't know. I submitted the green form. I guess I was a little late there. Yeah, back here, Keenan Wooton, 1915.
Name an address for the record, please. Name an address for the record.
Keenan Wooton, 1915 11th Avenue East. I'm a regular. Yeah, so 19th Street Court East. I want to thank Chief Bevan for giving the community a update on what was submitted to the June TST meeting. We got a report back from Ms. Clayback on a possible solutions for 19th Street Court East because we already know that's the Wild Wild West over there. I live right on that road, and it's a lot of traffic and traffic issues over there. One thing that Ms. Clayback did say that they found, or they're looking at this. It's one car per household on the street in the driveway. And the apartment complex on the western side, which is Vista or Treesdale, known as Oatmead or Avondale back in the day, they parked there as well. Also, in sub projects, it's only limited one space per tenant. This forces residents and visitors of these homes to find alternative parking, many along the street, impeding traffic coming and going. Ms. Clayback says this can't be addressed by the city of Bradenton and define the parking situation we face along 19th Street Court East. So basically, we're saying maybe need creative solutions that can be found or funded in handling traditional methods of parking. Okay, so about two weeks ago, we had a murder over there. And getting the fire rescue and ambulances in there was a nightmare because those cars still park on the side of the road. So I challenge you all to still come to that neighborhood. Come to Ward 5 on 19th Street Court East. We find funds to do other things, sidewalks in downtown and everything else. But this is a, this is a hazard. I'm gonna, I'm gonna stand on it. We have problems there. I come home at night and I see, I see the traffic problems turning in there, right there at that four-way stop, turning in from Citrus Meadows, right there on the left. It's hard to turn. It's hard to get out of the way. Someone has to stop, then go, then stop, then go. Like I said, we've already got into it with Mr. Ellis at the Bradenton Housing Authority. Something has to be done. There's going to be a boiling point with homeowners. We own houses over there. And just, well, if we can find the funds or not, that's not acceptable. No, 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 we're not. We're going to keep pushing that. It's starting to get a little traction in the neighborhood over there. People are starting to wake up and see it. I can turn, I can put on my social blinders and say, ah, I'm living good, and I don't really care. We've been doing that for 30 years now. Even when I was young, they were doing it. They're still doing it. Someone cares about it. So we're still going to push that. I'm glad it is moving. It was at the June meeting to talk about. And hopefully, we can get something out of it. Okay? But we're going to keep pushing that. Don't want anybody to get hurt over there, but it can happen. I mean, I'm a responsible citizen, and I've almost gotten a wreck over there. And they come from Treesdale. You know, I'm here late night, and it's nowhere to park, so then I go park, I go park there. And no one says anything. So with that being said, we need leadership with that, also with Ward 2. See, I'm asking you that you find someone with fresh leadership, attention to detail, values diversity, listens to millennials. That's something there, all right? That shows up, even if it's one or two of us there. So that's what we're looking for, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Woods. Anyone else who wishes to address the council? Anyone else? Anyone else? We'll move on. Ms. [inaudible]?
Yes, I just wanted to clarify that there were no citizen comments that came in through voicemail or through email from the past week for this actual meeting. Next, we have the consent agenda. We're asking for approval of items A through I.
Chair, on the 10 motion.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda, A through I. Second.
We have a motion, second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote. Ward 1?
Yes.
3?
Yes.
We're missing one. 4? 5?
Yes.
10 judges approved. Votes 4 to 0. Ms. [inaudible]?
Next, we have the CDBG 2020, 21, excuse me, 2020, 2021 Annual Action Plan Projects. This is a public hearing to open comment period. There's no vote on this today. We're just asking for the public hearing, and I believe Vicky is probably in the audience to, to explain.
So this is, someone going to come tell?
Today is a public hearing on the projects that were selected for funding for the 2020-2021 CDBG program year. We took public comments February 24th and 27th in public outreach meetings. We, then we put out applications. Applications were available February 27th through the 28th. We went through those applications. We presented them to the mayor and city council on March 25th during that council meeting. And they were advertised in the paper for 30 days of comment. And now, at this point, we didn't receive any comments on any of those activities. At this point, we are just having a public hearing to give the public one more opportunity to comment on the activities before we put together the draft action plan, which the mayor and city council will be voting on in their first August meeting. The activities that were selected for funding for next year were Meals on Wheels for $25,000 and Salvation Army's Homeless Prevention Project for $10,000. Those are public service projects. Non-public service projects, City of Bradenton's Code Compliance for $111,570. And Habitat for Humanities Affordable Housing Preservation for $203,340. And then, of course, Program Administration, which is a general operation of the program, which includes putting together things such as the Annual Action Plan, the Performance Report at the end of the year, managing some of the projects, handling payment requests from the sub recipients, technical assistance to the sub recipients. That is $87,477.
Do they have any questions, Vicky? Any question?
Any questions from the public?
When will be the provenance? Is this just FYI?
No, this is just a public hearing. I guess you, the plan will come up for final approval in August. I think it's August 12th when you have your meeting.
It'll come back to the council at that point.
Yes, that will be the final plan before we submit it to HUD for their approval.
All right. Thank you, Vicky.
You're welcome, sir.
It's open to public hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak in favor of any of these resolutions? Anyone in favor? Anyone in favor? Anyone in opposition to any of those resolutions? The opposition? The opposition? Hearing none? Close the public hearing. That will come back to us in August. Ms. [inaudible]?
Next, we have Resolution 20-45. A resolution of the city council of the city of Bradenton, Florida, authorizing the city's application for $1,441,750 in rebuild Florida Critical Facility Hardening Program Funds to retrofit a continuity of operations center and providing an effective date. I might just say that this and the next four resolutions are grant applications. We'll be asking you to vote on each one of them today so they can be submitted to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity. This is a project that Jim McClellan and Vicky have been working on using CDBG funds.
So these are the four resolutions?
There will be five total.
There'll be five of them? Okay. So we have, Scott, we do those individually?
Yes.
Resolution 2045.
Sharon, Ms. Mayor.
Chair? Yeah, Ms. [inaudible].
So we spoke, I just wanted to get this out for the public, that these are total, these are, these are flat-out grants. These are not, there's no city contribution. So we're basically chasing some federal money that has no, no chip in from us. So there's really no reason for us to pursue, to not pursue these.
It's worth a shot. I believe Jim would agree.
Yeah.
These are, these are all projects that are things that we would like to do.
Absolutely.
Anyways, but the money became available, and we identified these five projects to apply for. There's another program that just opened up that will probably put some additional grant applications in for. But the fact that there's no matching funds associated with this makes it somewhat of a no-brainer to try to chase the funds.
Absolutely, and these all seem, most of them seem to be going for lift stations, which I know we just, that's, they're, they're very expensive to keep running.
Well, there's, three of these are associated with lift stations. This first one, which is to upgrade the old Red Cross building to become a [inaudible] Operation Center, is basically to address the fact that if, if we're in an emergency situation, half of this building is within a flood zone. And if we had to evacuate here, we would like to be able to have a place where city operations could, could go and continue to provide services to the public. So that's providing upgrades there to allow that building to serve that role.
Motion to approve Resolution 2045.
Second.
We have a motion, a second to approve Resolution 2045. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote. Ward 3?
Yes.
4?
Yes.
5?
Yes.
1?
Yes.
Resolution 20-45 is approved. The vote is 4 to 0. Resolution 2046.
A resolution of the city council of the city of Bradenton, Florida, authorizing the city's application for $286,000 in rebuild Florida Critical Facility Hardening Program Funds to replace a generator at Lift Station 17 and providing an effective date. Again, this is the grant application. We're asking for a vote on this today.
Chair, on the 10 motion.
Motion to approve Resolution 2046.
Second.
We have a motion, a second to approve Resolution 2046. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote. Ward 4?
Yes.
5?
Yes.
1?
Yes.
3?
Yes.
Resolution 2046 is approved. The vote is 4 to 0. Resolution 2047.
A resolution of the city council of the city of Bradenton, Florida, authorizing the city's application for $286,000 in rebuild Florida Critical Facility Hardening Program Funds to replace a generator at Lift Station 14 and providing an effective date. Again, the grant application asking for a vote today.
Resolution 2047. Chair, on the 10 motion.
Move to approve Resolution 2047.
Second.
We have a motion, a second to approve Resolution 20-47. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote. Ward 5?
Yes.
1?
Yes.
3?
Yes.
4?
Yes.
Resolution 2047 is approved. The vote's 4 to 0. Resolution 2048.
A resolution of the city council of the city of Bradenton, Florida, authorizing the city's application for $1,725,900 in rebuild Florida Critical Facility Hardening Program Funds to eliminate Lift Station 13 and providing an effective date. Again, grant application asking for a vote today.
Chair, on the 10 motion.
A question, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Jim, eliminate Lift Station 13. Do we not need a lift station in that area, or has it been replaced?
No, the purpose of this would be to, Lift Station 13 sits, well, you know it all too well. It's right across the street. It sits roughly five feet from the edge of the river. The purpose of this project would be to reverse the flow of the gravity sewer system that serves that area to take it back and discharge into the lift station service area for Lift Station 3, which is 1,000 feet away from the water, and then allow us to eliminate 13 altogether.
Okay, so gravity will do the work. Was this bad design many, many years ago, or?
No, it was, you know, it's, the way in which it was designed, this is probably a 1950s lift station. And it serves a relatively small area, I think 282 homes altogether is what goes to it.
So where is Lift Station 3?
Lift Station 3 is at the, basically the dead end of 2nd Avenue East.
By the Bradenton Castle?
Correct.
Yeah. Okay, all right.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Rolfe, this is the one that sits almost on the river.
Yeah, I, it's a good one to get rid of.
Chair, on the 10 motion.
I moved to approve, move for, motion for Resolution 2047, 48.
48.
Second.
We have a motion, a second to approve Resolution 2048. Is there any discussion? We have a motion in a second to approve Resolution 20-48. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote. Word one?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Five?
Yes.
Resolution 20-48 is approved. The vote's four to zero. Ms. Boshen?
Resolution 20-49, a resolution of the city council of the city of Bradenton, Florida, authorizing the city's application for 451,700 dollars in rebuild Florida critical facility hardening program funds to replace outfall pipes and install tide check valves on Riverview Boulevard and providing an effective date. Again, this is now the last grant application that we'll be asking for and need a vote today.
Resolution 20-49. Chair, I entertain a motion.
Motion to approve Resolution 20-49.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve Resolution 20-49. Is there any discussion? Hearing done, let's vote. Word three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Five?
Yes.
One?
Yes.
Resolution 20-49 is approved. The vote's four to zero. Boshen?
And next, we have Resolution 20-50. We're changing track just a little bit. A resolution of the city council of the city of Bradenton, Florida, adopting the city's application for hurricane loss mitigation program funds and providing an effective date. This is another one of Vicky's requests. She may want to go into this a little bit further about what these funds are used for.
For the past four years, we've applied for hurricane loss mitigation program funding. We've received it three of the four years. One year, they decided to keep it themselves and do other stuff. We use this funding to install wind mitigation features on low and moderate income households, houses. It can be combined with shipping CDBG funding so that we can do a combination of mitigation and rehabilitation of these homes. It's actually worked out pretty good. It, not only does it make the house more resistant to storms, it also improves the energy efficiency of the house because we're installing insulated impact windows so that it will decrease the electricity bills. It also helps on their insurance bills because once they get the roof strapped and the windows and doors replaced with impact windows and doors, their insurance can go way down. They can, it makes about a, it can make up to a thousand dollar difference. We've, I really enjoyed working with this program. We've been able to help 30 households so far. We're hoping to help at least 10 to 15 more with funding this upcoming year. Did anybody have any questions?
Any questions, Vicky? Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
So Resolution 20-50.
Motion to approve Resolution 20-50.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve Resolution 20-50. Any more discussion? Hearing done, let's vote. Word four?
Yes.
Five?
Yes.
One?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Resolution 20-50 is approved. The vote's four to zero. Ms. Boshen?
Next, we have the first reading of ordinance 3066. An ordinance of the city of Bradenton proposing an amendment to the Bradenton City Charter, proposing a charter amendment revising the powers of the office of mayor, calling for a referendum on the proposed amendment to the charter to be held at the general election on November 3rd, 2020, providing the ballot title and ballot summary for the referendum, providing for direction to the city clerk and coordination with the Manatee County Supervisor of Elections, providing for severability, conflicts, and an effective date. And we'd be looking, of course, for how you'd like to proceed with this. We can set the second reading in public hearing if you're interested.
What's the date of the second reading in public?
The next available meeting would be July 8th.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance 3066 set for second reading on July 8th.
Second.
We have a motion in seconds on ordinance 30-66, set the second reading in public hearing on July 8th. Is there any discussion?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, I have a, a couple of legal questions I'd like to address to the attorney. First one, this is another ordinance. The other ordinance was 3064 that was vetoed. And I'd like to put this question forward. What would the changes made to this ordinance from 3064?
Sure. And good morning, Mayor and council members. The, the only change to the, to the ordinance that the, that the council reviewed previously is in the effective date provisions. So if you go to Section 7, you'll see that it references that the amendments to the charter, the amendments to the actual charter language itself would become effective on January 5th, 2021, which, which I believe to be the end of the mayor's current term. So, and so other than that, the, the proposed charter amendment language is, is exactly the same as what, as what was presented previously.
Okay, so there were no other changes other than the effective date?
Correct.
Okay. Presently, we have only four council members. And I know in the past what a supermajority was. In case of any veto of this ordinance, what would equal a supermajority?
Well, the, the charter requires four vo, four votes of the council to override the mayor veto. So it doesn't necessarily specifically reference a supermajority. It just says that four votes of the council is required.
But basically, that means it has to be a unanimous vote.
Correct.
Okay. Last question. Are we still within a timeframe for a ballot deadline in August if we go forward with the second reading and approvals for July 8th?
My recollection.
August 10th is the date that we have to have the information.
August 10th. So July 8th, we still would be within a timeframe if we go forward and approve this ordinance. No other questions or, or discussion.
I have a question.
Ms. Rolfe?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. What was the old effective date? This is now January 5th, 2021. When was the old one?
It didn't specify, so it would have become effective upon approval.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Scott?
Just for a point of clarification, the way I, I read it now, and I, and I guess I didn't read it that way the first time, there's nothing specific, any individual item of the mayor's authority. Are we just basically saying that we want to amend basically all his authority by what this, what this says? Revising the powers of the office of the mayor?
Correct. So there are several revisions to the mayor's powers that are proposed. One is removal of the general executive authority and supervisory powers over the officers of the city. The other is to the power to appoint, terminate, and, and direct the police chief. And the other item is the power to fill certain temporary vacancies. But the mayor would retain the powers to preside at the council meetings, break ties in council votes, and appoint committees and veto ordinances.
Okay. I, I tried to click on my computer here to define what, what I'm saying, and it would bring up nothing's the reason why I'm asking the questions for a point of clarification. So basically, it's those same three items that we voted on and got vetoed a couple weeks ago.
The, the only, the one ordinance was vetoed. The other two ordinances were approved.
I know, but I mean, then this is just dealing with his authority over the police department.
No, sir. This deals, this, this ordinance deals with all of the powers of the mayor, all the revisions of the powers to the mayor's office.
So using percentages, what percent of his power are we trying to take away from the mayor's position?
I don't know that that's something I could answer with a percentage. I mean...
Okay. Would you say it's more than 50%?
I mean, it, it depends what powers you, you deem to be.
Well, everything that he is authorized by a charter, that he's authorized to do, and we're removing, in my opinion, some of the most important parts, but it looks like it's over 50% of the power of what the mayor had that was authorized to do is going to be eliminated.
It would be a significant change to the power structure.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Any other questions or discussion? So now we need to, to vote on the second reading in public hearing? Is that right? Need a motion?
It's already on the table.
All right, sorry. We were in, in discussion. I lost that. So we're going to vote on 3066, second reading in public hearing for July the 8th. Word five?
Yes.
One?
No.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Ordinance 3066, first reading, or second reading in public hearing is set for July 8th. The vote is three to one. Ms. Boshen?
We have no new business, oh, excuse me, we do have new business under Councilman Harold Byrd. I apologize. A discussion regarding city council Ward 2 vacancy.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, first of all, I'd like to say that thank you for all of the earlier individuals that came forward expressing interest in the vacancy. One of the, the main reasons for doing this, as most of you realize, at the last meeting, between our last meeting and now, there have been some changes. And we saw urgency to try to put something on the agenda where we can at least have some discussion and the potential for putting forth an appointment to a vacancy on our, on the council. One of the things, I, I think over my time up here, I've, I've seen, I guess, resignations. And I understand the resigned-to-run statutes within the state of Florida. It says that in some instances, it has to be immediate. And so we're presented with this. And today, one of the, the main reasons I asked the last question is, is that as we go forward, trying to be a legislative team, we try, we have to try to have five voices because there's some things that are just, we just can't do the, in the same fashion if we just have four. Also, you have, I guess, a ward that really has no council person there. So it, to me, it's sort of an urgency. And I, I understand, you know, the rationale behind what, what brings us to this point. But there is urgency, and I think as a city council, we need to try to move forward. The, as far as putting it on the agenda, I think as we look at transparencies, many of you, you're, you try to, if you look back, a lot of discussion and votes that I've had, I've always wanted to see things on the agenda. And we wanted to put something out there on a agenda so people will know that at this particular meeting, we'll be having some full discussion and possibly making that appointment. Having said, you know, all of that, I came to the meeting ready to address this particular issue. And in full discussion, and I've talked with the city attorney, and it can go any number of ways. There's no, the charter set for us, what, how do we, we replace or refill the vacancy, but there's no process. I've gotten many calls from people asking about, well, what's the procedure? What's the process? And my reply was always, that has to be something that's discussed by city council. And I'm only one. And I, I, once again, I say, we, you see from the people that, residents that talked earlier, you know, you have several, you know, qualified residents that would like to be in that particular seat or given that appointment. And one of the things, and as we go, I know, I, I feel that we should have full discussion among, amongst the, I guess, decision makers on this. But one of the, the main things that I look at is, is that we have a, I guess, a local government right now that's, we're getting ready to go through a process. I know my seat, you won't have any experience at my seat. They'll, they, they have two great candidates, you know, but you won't have any experience at all at this particular seat. You look at the Ward 1, it's already been, you know, pretty much a council-elect for that particular seat. And so we'll be losing plenty of years of experience with Councilman Gallo, which brings me to the two council people we have here. Their experience, they're here. And, but that's where we're at at this point, which led me in the direction, and we've heard from everybody, and, you know, I, I think at this point, if I were to make a decision today, it would be strongly based on setting forth a city council that has the, the experience going into the next couple of years where we can, you know, not miss a beat, just hit the ground and running. We have one candidate that I think presents that. And I respect the opinions of the rest of council, and that's why we should have a full discussion. But if there was going to be a motion made today for one candidate, I plan to, after further discussion, and see where the rest of council is, I'm prepared to make a motion that Marion Barnaby be appointed to the Ward 2 seat. I've worked with her in the past. I think two or three others of you have in the past. And I'm prepared to date to do that. But it's one of those things, it's up to council whether you want to go into a discussion about, you know, a process, accepting resumes. I've heard people, you know, say that they wanted to go through some kind of a procedure. But it's up to council. I'm one councilman, but I am prepared. And after full discussion, to present that motion for appointment of Marion Barnaby to the seat. Thank you.
Is that a motion, Mr. Byrd?
Uh, no. I, I said after full discussion. I think council needs to, you know, present their views.
Yeah, I, I have a comment.
Sure.
I'd like to, and I think you really, we really ought to advertise the position. We have, before people show up, and we, most people didn't even know we were moving forward this quickly on that. I would think we would advertise the position. You don't have to advertise it for six months, but it gives other people the opportunity. We may find candidates who very well fit the bill.
Let me make a, a comment on that. And that's why I talked about the urgency. Right now, we've never been in this position before. And I'll tell you, I look back into, into my files, my memory, there's always been a resignation, and it's been a, a amount of time where we could go through a process. We're, we're going, the city's going, right now, we're going through COVID-19. We're going through other issues. People crying out for reforms, police department, citizen review, all types of issues that are before. And, and I, I just think, and, and the last thing is, is that you got Ward 2 without the council person there. And so, you know, you're talking about going through advertising and all this and that, when you have someone that served that particular ward for many years. And that's the way I feel at this point, but I'm just wanting council person. I think, you know, my opinion that other than if we go into a process and ask for people to present things at the next meeting at the most, but I just don't think we should go through a long process so that we get into a situation, another situation with the, a ballot question that may timeout in some way, shape, or form because we didn't move. move with urgency.
Ms. Gallo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I agree with you, Harold, that Ms. Barnaby comes with a, a great amount of experience. But some of the comments you made, I, I want to discuss when you say that, that ward two would not have anybody watching over, no representation, that's not true.
I say council person.
Okay. We have, we have, we have four council people right now that look and represent five wards. Today, under my business, I'm prepared to deal with, that's come to me, two issues in ward four and one issue in ward two that I'm prepared to bring before city council. We have used the word transparency seems like in the last ninety days anyway, quite often. And, and I agree with that. I, I want the people in this city to feel like the five people that represent the wards up here and the mayor represent them. And I, I believe, and I've sat through one of these before, when Fred Runnels had to resign because of health conditions, councilman was not appointed overnight. There was time taken to appoint Mr. Birkins out of that ward. And, and I do feel that there's a possibility that to really be transparent, and it doesn't have to be a long time, but I think that we should run an article or whatever, or an application, whatever you want to call it, in the paper, letting the people in ward two know that this position is open and if anybody feels qualified and interested, should come down and deal with Ms. Beauchamp, get, get their name and address. But I think it's important because the people of this community vet every one of us and they vet us during a campaign. And I think it's, it's our responsibility to vet the people who are interested in this position. I want to know how they feel about things. I want to know if they're going to be representing the city in a manner in which I think, not what you think or they think, but what I think is something that I want to see. So I think we need to take time. It's a very important position. It's not something that we should do right away. And I bring to mind, this folder right here is a folder of applications for the building director of this city, which is a very important, important position. We haven't even filled that and look how long that's been vacant. So I would not support appointing somebody today. And I don't know what the law says, whether I, I gotta vote or not have to vote if, if a motion is made, but I certainly oppose it. I don't think it's proper or appropriate to do that based on, for the people, the citizens of Baton. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Byrd.
Yeah. Let me start off with the comment, I told you so, not to anyone here, but the, I, I said at the very beginning of the charter discussion that we had a flawed document that was not thorough. It was, it suited a city for, for many years. It was written in a, you know, a time when horse and buggies were still on Main Street. And it specifically states how, it, it restate, it states how, how this position is supposed to be filled. It doesn't give any details, though. It doesn't, it's very vague. It's like, it just says it's a council decision, doesn't say when, doesn't say, so it's just, it's just not thorough. You know, when it says that we're elected, it says when we're going to get sworn in. It says, you know, it, it's, it's got details except for this position where it says, in case of death of resignation, the city council shall decide. End of discussion. Right, Scott?
That's correct.
So it's up to the council. That being said, we're moving forward. I don't remember any time in, in history that I've been involved in politics where we had a position just vacate like this. It's very unusual. I gotta tell you, there was a, a lot of frantic phone calling when the decision was made by the mayor and, and the, and the current occupant resigned to run. So it, it happened out of the blue. It, it put this council in a position to where we have to do something. The rules are vague yet specific that we're supposed to fill it. It doesn't say when, it doesn't say that we should wait, doesn't say that we should advertise, doesn't say, it's literally up to us and how we feel. I was elected to do a job. I will. We have, right now, four excellent choices, and I gotta say that. Any one of these people would be a great choice. I know three of them personally and I, I could work with any one of them. They've all proved themselves in the community. I do not know Mr. Bedford, but I can tell you on the day that the whole shakeup happened, I received a phone call from an individual, a Politico, who was aware that this was going to happen. I was told ahead of time and I was told that Mr. Bedford was going to throw his hat in the ring. So whoever that person was, boy, they sure knew what was going to happen. So I checked out Mr. Bedford's resume and he has an excellent resume. He'd be an excellent choice. So here we are with four excellent choices that all reside legally inside the ward. That being said, as Mr. Byrd has said, this is, these are very unusual times. This is, uh, this is the only worldwide pandemic in my lifetime, in my sixty-three years. It's not getting better. I know we're going to have a discussion later, I think, about staffing. And, you know, we were, we, we geared down and we were getting ready to gear back up and now we're going to discuss where we're going again. This is not getting better. It's, uh, it seems to be, we were told that there might be a fall insurgence. We weren't told it was going to be happening before July. So we've got a lot of things to do to serve this public, public safety. That being said, I, I, I believe there is a need for urgency and there's no specifics on whether we should move slowly or quickly. The charter is flawed, so it's our decision. Of the four choices, and that's four choices, that's an excellent, that's an excellent The one person that now stands out, because they're, these are, these are, these are great choices, is someone who has served in this capacity before, can hit the ground running. Vetting, I could tell you right now that I'm a, as a politician, I learned right off the bat that, you know, elections are, it's called the art of political campaigning. I've gone to school for electing, for, for running campaigns many times. I pride myself on, on trying to run professional campaigns. I know that I have never reached a seventy percent approval rating and nor have I seen anyone else hit that number. I'm very proud of my last race, I hit my highest approval rating with the lowest amount of funds, sixty-three percent, and I'm damn proud of that. I know that Marion Barnaby has hit seventy percent twice. So the reason, she's been vetted by the public in the past. She left this race to run against the current mayor a while ago, which opened up a seat, but she did so in time to not leave a vacancy, which is, you know, I, I appreciate that. I do. Mr. Byrd did the same thing. This last minute jerking around, I don't like operating like that. I, I wish we weren't in this position right now. It wasn't my call. I'm reacting to a decision that other people made.
Mr.?
I'm not done.
Well, I just wanted you to correct something before we go any farther. There was no law when those people left. This has only been passed two years ago, that there's a timeframe that if you, if you ran for office, you had to resign. That was not around, so.
Okay, well, then, then, but, but I could tell you that I do recall that Ms. Barnaby, I think when she announced that she was going to run, I believe it was late spring. So even if there was a law, she did it in more than enough time for us to get that ballot on the, to get that, to get ward two on the ballot, that's when Mr. Brown came in. So she did so for the good of the city in enough time that we could put it on the ballot. We can't do that right now. This position, from what I understand, is only going to be for two years, for the, the time remaining, and then it'll be on the ballot again. So it's just a, a fill-in slot to, you know, to, to fill, to run this clock out. So these are all, this, this is just a position that's, that's been dumped on my lap, Gene. I, I didn't create it, I'm just reacting to it. So, you know, I, I think we, I think we would do well with any one of the choices. I really do.
I agree.
I, I, so having four choices, I, I would say that for the facts that I've given, I, I would go with Ms. Barnaby.
Ms. Gallo.
Mr. Mayor, I would just like to respond to, as a point of clarification. Everything didn't just all of a sudden come out of the sky. I think everybody that knows Mr. Brown knows that he, from day one, his goal was to run for mayor for some day, but he would not run against Wayne Poston. Now, had Mr. Poston made a decision six months ago, Mr. Brown would have announced that he was running for mayor. But Mr. Poston made a late decision and I've never asked him this, but I, I kind of figure the reason why is he has been hammered by the majority of this council in the last six months like nothing I have ever seen in my entire life. And I've seen some problems between the, the council and the mayor and so has Mr. Byrd because he was involved in, in some, but I've never seen it this bad. It's, to me, it's been not very appropriate. It's been an embarrassment for me personally and I thank my Lord Jesus Christ who gave me the sense to say, Gene, this is the year you retire. And I have asked that man right there a number of times why he would want to stay. He's not liked. I mean, that's quite evident. And so when it happened, it's not something that was planned. When he made up his mind, nobody knew that this law existed. I didn't know it because it was only passed two years ago and I haven't ever resigned or nobody's ever resigned around here, that in fact you must leave the seat. Mr. Byrd announced for mayor in time where he didn't have to.
Yeah.
I, I'm ready for you to say something and you may know something that I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, a, a couple of points.
But I'm just not saying it was not planned, it's just the way the law is.
We, we talked about this in a council meeting just a little while ago. It was, the city attorney, remember the question was asked, resign to run. It was even looking at other seats. I believe Mr. Sanders was asking that, but the main thing was overlapping terms was when it really, you know, caused the statute to come into effect. And I will say this, you say that the, the way the statute is now, yes, it was a couple of years ago, but I believe there was still, you know, legislation out there where you would have to, in some way, shape, or form, resign from one position to run for another. But in my case, it was not a resignation because there wasn't an overlapping term. And it was one of the things that, that came out at an earlier council meeting because, you know, there was some discussion on what that particular statute meant. I believe maybe about a year ago it was discussed. But yeah, I didn't have to resign. I just had to, you know, just not run for my seat again.
And I think that's the way it should be, personally.
Yeah.
I don't think you should have to, to resign like Mr. Brown had to resign. And if the law wasn't there, we wouldn't be in this predicament right now. And we could, you know, we could have had somebody on the ballot to run for ward two had that law didn't exist.
Right.
And I, I'm just saying, I, I think that for us to rush into this is wrong, just absolutely wrong.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Sanders. I brought this up to the city attorney months and months and months ago and it was very clear you had to resign to run if you do it in that qualified period. I, I got a direction from RC Legal and so it was very clear, everyone on this board knew the rules, whether it was two years ago or two months ago, that's, it was very clear. I made it very clear, very much so, several months ago. So to do this in the last minute, right after a veto, to me was self-serving.
It was what, sir?
Self-serving. You want to be mayor more than you want to be a councilman or represent your people.
Well, I, I, I think you're right because the gentleman's always said he wanted to be mayor.
Well, there was a better way.
There was not, he wouldn't run.
There was a better way to do it than put us, put us in this predicament. But I'll move on from that, that's beside the point. We've got four excellent candidates. I'd like to say to you, where was you twenty eighteen? I guarantee you, one of you four would have this seat already if you had to put your name on the ballot. And that's the proper way to do it, to let the public vote. I always believed, like Mr., Ms. Barnaby, the public is, is, is the voice, not my, not my wishes or desires to be mayor or councilman. The public has to vote and I got sixty-three percent of the vote too, Mr. Roth. So overwhelmingly, about one hundred percent of all precincts, because I told the public, I'm going to listen to you and serve you and the day I don't, you don't really like me if I decide to run again. But with that said, excellent, excellent. I could pick, I know three of you guys and I, excellent resumes. Any one of you could be councilman or probably mayor. I suggest that we only can pick one and this is a hard job for me because I didn't know there was that much interest in it out there. I wished you, like I said, done this a couple of years ago. You'd already had the seat. I guarantee you, one of you four would have had this seat, either one. But, and I wished that we'd have done it properly and, and I think that if you don't research what the laws are, you're, you haven't prepared yourself for, for office. If you don't know that you have to do this in order to put a person's name on the ballot to let the public vote, then shame on you. You don't do this in the, in the eleventh hour after a veto for your self-serving interest or wanting to become mayor. It's just, that's, that's not fair to the public. If you'd have done it a month ago or two months ago, their names could have been put on the ballot for this November and then we wouldn't have to make this decision. You forced us to make this decision and I'm prepared to make a decision. I'm not prepared to make a motion, but the way this was handled forced us to do it this way. It is nobody's fault on this board presently. And so with that said, we can take time and let me tell you, the three of you that don't get chosen, I encourage you to run for council or mayor or whatever position you want. And if you'd like to be on a board, by golly, I think any one of you qualified to be on any of the boards we have. Come forward, you know, show your interest in the city. And some of you have already done this and I, I, I strongly encourage you to get involved because I think you're all great candidates. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor. Ms. Gallo. Just to put a little kindness into the discussion, and since everybody has, has projected their ego and thrown their chest out, I would like to do the same for me.
I've been in office seven terms. Guess what, Mr. Sanders? Five of those times I ran, I got a hundred percent. A hundred percent. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Byrd.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Marianne Barnaby to the Ward Two council seat.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to appoint Marianne Barnaby to the Ward Two council seat. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Gallow.
I want I want to ask the attorney a question. I think he's about to fall asleep, but I want to wake him up.
Oh, I doubt that.
If I vote no, can I stipulate that I'm voting no based on the action that we're taking and that I'm not voting against Ms. Barnaby?
You can certainly put that into the record, I think that would be appropriate. We can't stipulate our vote, but I think you could you could make those comments for the record.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, and I think in in discussion, I think all of us have said the rest of the candidates. It's not a vote against the rest of the candidates either. And I believe I heard that in comments from the other council. Excellent individuals, residents that have come forward. And it's not a it's not a it's not a saying, hey, no way, you know, on the rest of the applicants either.
Mr. Mayor. But Mr. Byrd, my friend, you haven't talked to these three and ask them, what is your vision? What is it, what direction is it that you want to see the city go? It's that's unfair. It's totally unfair.
Gene, that's why in my discussion, I talked about urgency. We've been thrown into a situation where, hey, two weeks, two weeks! And we wouldn't be in this situation right now, two weeks. This thing, it 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 would have been on the ballot. Somebody would have been running for Ward, uh, Ward Two. You know, immediate, it was immediate, it's urgency. And we have someone with experience that knows the community. I've had had several emails from individuals in my ward that have talked about this particular situation. So, you know, I have a motion on table, but I I just I just don't want to, you know, say anything is is. I I think we're looking out for the 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 betterment of this city by putting somebody in that has experience. I could see if we just picked somebody out of the blue.
I don't argue that, Mr. Byrd. I'm not arguing that point. God bless her, she knows, she knows it, she's been here. But let's face it, the only urgency, the only urgency we have is because of what you're afraid there may be a veto again on a, you know, we have operated when a councilperson's been sick. It wasn't an urgency that we would not got somebody out of the ward to sit in this chair. The four of us can run the city and make the decisions that need to be made until we get somebody in there.
Can I rebut that? You know, I think if we're we're looking at situations and tying the two together, we need to look at the same date. The very same day there was a a a vacation or you give up on a campaign, then you somebody else announces they're running for that. And it was a the 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 strong vote that went against the override of the veto. So, you know, I I think you you have to look at some things, the way things went down. Everybody, you know, is saying, hey, you know, foul, you know. We have a chance, we have a chance right now to move forward as a city. And it has nothing, it it's not about me. It's about trying to move forward. We we have, this this is someone that served, we talked about the the big recession. You talk about being on this council at that time, and we we made it through that. You know, to me, that means a lot, it means a lot. When we look out there and someone that's willing to come and serve again, that was there when this city and 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 went through what it did, made the decisions, the hard decisions during that time, they were part of this team, you know.
Mr. Mayor.
So.
Mr. Mayor, just want to react and make sure I understand. Are you saying, Mr. Byrd, that you think that the resignation and the announcing was planned?
No, I was rebutting what you were saying, and you're saying that we're tying together an appointment with the the veto and everything.
Oh, I believe that.
And I'm I'm showing I'm showing.
I'm not the only one that believes that, believe me, I've got enough phone calls on that.
Well, hey, that's that's your choice.
I understand.
And and I respect your opinion.
That's just smart politics, I'm not I'm not saying anything, nothing illegal about it.
You know, but I I think people that that know me, they know that I I'm trying to do what's best. And I think what's best is we put somebody into the seat that has experience, can hit the ground, you know, go the ground running. But I'm just one councilperson, I'm willing to, you know, if the rest of council, majority of council said, hey, we want to sit back and do, then fine and dandy. You know, I've been on the losing end a lot of stuff since I've been up here over the years. But I'm going to voice my opinion, and I think for for Bradenton right now, to have someone with experience and have gone through, you know, that should be, you know, number one in the the situation that we're in as a as a country, as a city, you know, and that's just my opinion.
When when I had open heart surgery, when I had open heart surgery, you know how many meetings I missed? My ward wasn't replaced, and the city ran and ran good, maybe better when I wasn't here. I don't know. But that's all I'm saying, I I do not feel in my heart that we have to make that decision this quick without vetting people and understanding the person that we're putting in office. Ms. Barnaby definitely has the experience. But I don't know what her vision is now. She's been gone a few years. And I don't know what the vision is of the other three gentlemen. And I don't know the vision of what who may come in and apply. And that's what I think is best for the city, personally. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Sanders, I, speaking as a non-politician, a businessman for forty-plus years, this is my first gig as a now a po- as a as a politician. And I know, I respect you, you've been here sixty years of your life to the city, I appreciate that, great. But here's what I see. And I think I've I've had numerous, numerous comments to me through the community that our last council meeting, June tenth, we adjourned about ten thirty, right after a veto of a charter, that I went back and looked at, by the way, and I have it here if you'd like to see it. In November twentieth, I had Ms. Bochamp research it. It had five zero vote to move forward with this exact same ordinance. If you'd like to see it, Mr. Gallow, you said last meeting you didn't approve it, but you did. So if you want to see it, I got it.
Well, that's wrong. Mr. Mr. Patrick even corrected you, he remembers that, I did not vote for it. When we voted on it, I did not vote for it.
Here it is, Ms. Bochamp gave me this, please hand it down to him.
You're you're talking about going forward.
Yeah.
I'm talking about I didn't vote for it when it came up.
Well, no, I know you changed your.
I voted for it.
I know, you changed your mind, you're welcome to do that.
Okay.
But you did, but you did vote to move it forward last year, five oh.
Absolutely.
You don't want to see it, then it's so.
No, I I want to get that, you have a motion on the floor, now this is personal.
No, it's not personal, he he brought it up.
Let's talk about what we have.
Okay, let's talk about that, let's talk about that. I'm not finished yet. I know it's hard for you to relive this, but I'm I didn't create the issue. At ten thirty, this council adjourned on June tenth, right after this veto. At one twenty-eight, you withdrew from the race as mayor. At three twenty, less than two hours later, Councilman Brown applies to run for mayor. It didn't offer the opportunity for the public to be on the ballot. So you put us in this critical state. And now we're coming up on budget times, and let me tell you something. We've got a virus that's been going on, and it's going to continue to go on, and we may get budget cuts. So it's critical to have somebody sitting here right today to make these decisions. And that's what the charter says. So you don't want to change the charter, but then you want to, you know, like, wait a minute. You can't use the charter only when it's convenient. Your charter is flawed. We know it's flawed, because it's a hundred and twenty years old. So we're changing that, because the people have asked us to do that. So that's what's on the agenda today. It's got the vote, we're going to move forward, we got a budget that's coming up right now. We we'll be talking about this probably at the next council meeting, and we need to have somebody on board.
Mr. Sanders, I would just want to comment on what you're saying there. I vetoed that charter amendment, because I don't think it's in the best interest of the city, and I gave you a list of reasons why. And one of the things that I knew would come up from this council is I wanted to veto that, so I would have a lot of power. Knowing that would happen, I went down and dropped out of my reelection campaign right after I vetoed that, because I didn't want anybody to think that I did that in my interest. I did it in the interest of the city of Bradenton, which I have served honorably for twenty-one years. That's how that happened, just for your information.
One last. Thank you. I I just wanted to say that, you know, this process, that it seems dominoed into the resignation, the withdrawal and the resignation, it started over a year ago. It it has been talked about in public session for well over six months. You know, a comment was made about behavior of the council. I I can tell you that that I have been on the losing side of a three-two vote most of the time that I've been elected. And when I do so, I act like a gentleman, I can count to five, and I can count to three. And when I'm on the losing side, I just say, well, that's just the way it's going down, and I don't have a temper tantrum. I believe that this could have been done better. I believe that a gentleman knows how to accept reality. And I just, I'm not gonna wear the guilt of bad behavior on this council when it could have been done better. If, you know, there's three, there's five council, three votes win, that's the way it goes. And and you do the best that you can to persuade others to try to change their vote. But after after it's obvious that's not gonna happen, you don't hammer them, you don't nitpick, you don't you don't chisel away just to try to, I'm not sure what the what the goal is, because it doesn't, it doesn't serve a purpose. It just gets people worked up. Maybe the goal is to get people angry, so it looks bad. Maybe that's the goal, I don't know, I don't operate that way, I don't understand what the goal is. All I know is I have behaved better. And this this, it just, it's just ironic that after all this time, it ends up with a withdrawal and a resignation, and now everyone's all panicking, this is just what's been going on for so long. And, you know, I I don't know, it's 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 just, it's just mind-boggling. But no, I'm gonna move forward. The the charter says that we have to fill the slot. It's our responsibility, it doesn't give any specifics, it doesn't give any details. I told you the charter was flawed, this is proof. And I also said I wanted a citizens review committee from day one. I came in with the League of Cities magazine on how to do it. Nobody wanted to do it my way, the right way. And now at the very end, we have a veto, and you should have done it the right way. No kidding, really, thank you.
Mr. Roth, in that same minutes, I, if you want to see it, you did verify that that's what that's what you recommended, and nobody even, nobody wanted that until till last meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I think the the motion we have is for appointing Marianne Barnaby to Ward Two. And, you know, I'm sure those of you know that this goes to public hearing, the other part of the conversation today, so I'm sure there'll be time to have further discussion on that. But I think we need to move forward with the vote for Marianne Barnaby. Thank you.
We have a motion and a second to appoint Marianne Barnaby to the Ward Two seat. And if we have a discussion, we're gonna vote. Ward one.
Mr. Mayor, I am going to stipulate that while I support Ms. Barnaby, I do not support the procedure and what we're doing, so I'm gonna vote no.
Word three.
Yes.
Four.
This is a hard choice, I'm telling you, I'm really proud of the four of you that stepped forward. And but only one person can fill the slot. And this is a hard vote for me, because I could pick any one of you four. And I encourage you to run on the next election, it's not that far off, so I vote yes.
Mr. Byrd.
Ward five votes yes.
Ms. Barnaby, appointed to the seat, the vote is three to one.
Mr. Mayor.
Mister, let me ask the attorney something. So she takes the seat, when?
Well, some of that may be up to her. She's she's been appointed now, so she'll need to be sworn in. She may want to elect when she wants to do that, I don't know if she's prepared to do that today or not. If she were, she could take the seat today, or she could be sworn in at another time if she wants to do that.
So if you'll, Ms. Barnaby, get back in touch and tell me when you want to be sworn in, that would be appropriate, you can come forward and talk now if you'd like.
Mr. Mayor, can I make a comment? We talked about urgency, so I I know that's a just a personal decision by Ms. Barnaby. But we talk so much about urgency, I'd like to make it at at her earliest convenience. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, council members, and the public. Thank you for the honor that you have bestowed upon me. I would really like to have my family here, and I think that I might be able to do that by nine AM tomorrow morning, if that is available.
We would want to give twenty-four hours notice, I believe, would that be a public meeting that we would do that at, or no?
No, we wouldn't need a public meeting.
I'm sorry, I could.
The question was, is it a public meeting? Unless you all are prepared to continue this meeting until after I'm sworn in until tomorrow, then that would make it a public meeting, as I understand it. And while I'm no attorney, I spent a lot of time with a pretty good one. The swearing-in ceremony is just a ceremony, it is not considered a public meeting, and and you would not be able to take any action as a council unless this meeting was continued until then. That's that's this non-attorney opinion, but perhaps Mr. Rudisil, who I understand, even though he graduated from the University of Florida Law School, is a pretty good lawyer.
So this is how it's going to be. No, that it is a ceremonial, it's only ceremonial, she can do that anytime, the council wouldn't even need to be present.
What time do you want to do this tomorrow?
I said, I I think we could do it at nine tomorrow morning.
I would really like to be here, and I have a doctor's appointment tomorrow.
Okay, perhaps.
A little later in the, like a ten or eleven would be fine.
Let me see what I can do. I don't, I don't keep my husband's calendar, and I will need to check with his assistant. If you would prefer, I can also check with your assistant to see. And if anybody else, my cell phone number is still the same from the last time I was on the council, so.
Tomorrow work for everybody?
Unfortunately, I'm I'm tied up, but I I got a a relative that I I think formed a school board member that would love to be here. So I'll try to see if I can get get her there for that. But I I have a conflict tomorrow, sorry.
Well, what I will do is I will make phone calls. Well, what I will do is I will make phone calls as quickly as I can. I will get back with Ms. Beauchamp.
Yeah, please.
And if you, again, if you would like me to check with Kelly, or...
She can do that.
Okay. Again, thank you very much. I'm very honored, and I will do my best.
Thank you.
Marianne, thank you for be willing to do this. Personally, I'm shocked that you're actually willing to do this again.
I think it's important I give my husband all the evidence he needs for that competence requirement.
Keenan, do you have something?
All right, first of all, I want to congratulate Mrs. Barnaby. Just sitting through this conversation, going back and forth, I'm a little bit disappointed. For months and years, we've been coming down here, saying, look, we have issues. We have problems with our charter, and we've been, some people have been called crazy. You don't know what you're talking about. But yet today, we found some other issues that's not clear. It's not uncut. Do I know this? Do I know that? What move do I make? Then we sit through our argument again. It hurts as a young person here in the city of Bradenton, who stayed, by the way. I can hear my grandma now, 101 years old. There's problems down there in the city of Bradenton. We just sat through a whole argument for an hour. I pray that the other candidates get involved, come down, volunteer. Let's do this as a family. Just today, just prove that there's still issues. Is the city of Bradenton the city that eats their own young? I've stayed around and endured it. I don't want to do it anymore. We want real change and solutions, not arguments. Sat there and endured that the whole time. I pray that we can come together, and come together on all sides, to make the city of Bradenton a better place. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Beauchamp? Had unfinished business?
No unfinished business.
Council reports, Mr. Gallagher?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had three items to bring up before the council. I've resolved one of them with our Public Work Director before the meeting, but I have received, I wouldn't say complaints, but direction on flooding. Riverview Boulevard West, on high tide, has been for years, floods. I personally drove down the other day to look at it. Riverside Drive East has the same problem. When it's high tide, it floods. In fact, I think that one probably floods worse than Riverview Boulevard. And my conversation is, will a seawall being built resolve that?
Building the seawall higher would be a partial solution. The main source of flooding that you see on both of those roadways is backflow of river water coming through the stormwater outlet pipes. We just recently completed a project on a portion of Riverside Drive East where we replaced all of the outlet pipes, put check valves in those pipelines in order to try to prevent the river water from coming back just at a high tide, even when it's not raining. We had previously done that, done something of that nature on Riverview in the past, where we didn't replace the pipes, we put check valves in the existing pipes. Unfortunately, that didn't work. We weren't getting a decent enough seal around the valve inside the pipe, which is why one of the grant applications you approved for us today is to do just what we just did on Riverside in order to try to eliminate that. The other problem is, you see on Riverview Boulevard, the seawall is actually about a foot or so higher than the ground behind it right now, but there are drain pipes through that because whenever the water splashes over the top, it's got to have a way to get out. So to me, building a seawall solves a portion of the problem, but it doesn't solve the problem.
Jim?
I'm not through, Mr. ...
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Thank you. Since it only happens in certain areas of Riverside Drive East and Riverview Boulevard, it doesn't do the entire, what is keeping it from flooding in those other places?
It depends upon where the outlet pipes are. So for instance, there are outlet pipes at certain locations, like Riverview Boulevard is, from 19th Street to 26th Street, has 15 separate pipes that exit out.
That drains the rainwater into the rivers.
Correct. Correct. Some of those are simply catch basins that are on the side of the road and only receive flow from water that falls on Riverview Boulevard. Others are connected to the drainage system that goes back up the streets. The same holds true on Riverside, where there are catch basins that are located on the road and only receive flow from the road, and there are others that have systems that go all the way back up to Manatee Avenue. So there's more flow coming at them under normal storm conditions.
Is there anything that we can do about it, or is it something we just have to live
There's always a fix. I mean, ultimately, the only solution that is a true, permanent fix, and it still has problems, would be to have a stormwater pumping system installed. But that doesn't solve the problem of water being in the roadway during a storm event because where are you pumping the water to? You're pumping the water into the river, and the river is backflowing through the pipes. So you're kind of wasting the effort.
Right. So do you think the combination of building a higher seawall and putting proper backchecks valves on there would take care of 80, 90% of it?
I don't know that I'd want to put a percentage on anything at this point without looking at it in more detail, because again, you're going to have to determine what elevation do you want to put that seawall at. I mean, right now, I believe the seawall, like I say, on Riverview is about a foot higher than it is on Riverside. Even that, though, is not at a 100-year flood elevation. A 100-year flood elevation is another two feet higher than that. So then you become the question of, do you want a vertical wall in front of all of those properties? There's value to it, but there's also a negative aspect of it.
Well, I sat there and watched the one at Riverview Boulevard West, and watching, especially if a boat out in the middle of the river comes flying by and makes a big wake, I mean, it pours over the top of that.
In some places.
Yeah. I mean, pretty good flow. Now, what I saw on Riverside Drive East was just a total flood. I mean, and I can understand the people that I've talked to said, I'm driving my car through this saltwater, and it's not good for my vehicle, it's not good for my brakes, it's not good, you know, for my undercarriage. And I sympathize with that, and I'm just hoping that we could maybe put a team together to look at that and come up with some answer that would help some of it. What you're telling me, that's a possibility. If we can't do a cure-all, but maybe we can better serve them by it only happening once in a while instead of every time we have a hard rain and it happens to be high tide.
Well, the other aspect is, when you put a check valve in the pipeline, you're preventing the river from backflowing during normal tides, but it also has the potential to hold water for a little bit longer during a rain event. So you're solving one problem and partially creating another, or making an existing one worse, under a storm condition, when it can't go anywhere until the tide releases. That's just the nature of the beast.
Mr. Gallagher, I live on that street.
I know, sir.
So flooding is a bad thing, particularly for traffic that's getting off Manatee Avenue and coming down Riverview, because I think it's less traffic, and then go on out. So those of us who live there kind of like that water a little bit. It slows traffic.
As I sat there and watched it, I saw cars that were coming from the south, I guess that were new, coming down the road, and when they come there and all of a sudden seeing that flood, they made a U-turn and went back out and headed in another direction.
I do know that one of the other things that had been considered in the past, do you raise the road? But there are implications of doing that as well.
Is that a viable situation that can be done?
You can always raise the road. The issue that's related to it is, how high do you raise the road? I can't raise, I mean, if I'm going to raise it to make it above flood elevation, you're going to have a berm in front of everybody's house. But ultimately, I still have a drainage system on that street that discharges to the river, and unless I have something to stop the river from backflowing through the pipe under high tide conditions, it's going to still get there.
So what do you suggest that I give an answer to the people that have asked me? Just, sorry, but it's something that...
No, we are in the process of, like I say, we've put in the grant application. We tried something on Riverview five, six years ago. We've learned that it didn't work. We've tried something on Riverside recently. We think it's working better, but again, it still holds water when it rains, but I think we're seeing that it doesn't backflow through the pipes. There's still other portions of Riverside that need to be done as well, beyond the four-block segment of it that we did this past year. So it's a work-in progress.
Thank you.
A comment I had is, I live on Riverside Drive East, and it's not just...
You do?
I do. And, well, I'll make this statement, you know, when I bought there, I knew it was happening, so I don't feel sorry for myself. You know, I got a beautiful view, so what? I just don't drive through the water, you know? So I'm not going to, anybody that's bought there lives there, I'm sorry that you got the most beautiful view in the world, and you have to tolerate a little water every now and then. That'd be my comment to somebody that, because I've got some people, it's a few blocks from me, and I tell them the same thing. Man, you bought here, you knew that this problem existed, so you think we can fix it? We're three foot above sea level there, I believe, and I get water almost up to my front yard, just in high tide. Now, the high tides are getting bigger and bigger every year with global warming, so it's becoming more of a problem, but it's because the backflow comes in out of that. So that will solve, in my opinion, most of the problem, because I don't like, it didn't rain for five days, and you get a high tide, and you've got water up to your bell box. Well, that says our system needs to change there. We need to have those probably all up down, all the way up down that river, and that's what your grant is for, but I suggest if we don't get the grant, that we have some budget discussions...
Oh, absolutely.
On that infrastructure, because I'm, I think we, this is a personal opinion, that we need more money in this city to go to infrastructure and not less. Even in a time of crisis like we're at now, I still believe your department is very, very important to the citizens, because that's where a lot of our complaints come from. And I'm here, again, like Marianne Barnaby says, to solve the customer complaints, and that's a good thing, so that's my take on it. And the mayor lives there, no, he knows that, and like, so he probably likes it, no traffic. Okay, fine.
Slows it down a little bit.
It slows it down a little bit, me too. It's like, nobody comes through there except the police department, and they regularly schedule through there and patrol the area, and does a good job.
Thank you, Jim. Mr. Gallagher, anything else?
No, thank you.
Mr. Roth?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I'll just kind of continue this conversation a little bit. As you all know, I live on Virginia Drive, a tidal basin, been there for 30, 30-some years, and as a former member of the Sarasota Bay Estuary, the chair of the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council, which has just formed a resiliency committee, also is part of the Tampa Bay Estuary, and Florida League of Cities, this is an issue that's been talked about for close to a decade and been trying to be acted on in the last six or seven years. I know the League of Cities kind of got the ball rolling. We have two tide charts in the Tampa Bay area that have been monitored twice a day since 1950, 5-0, and they prove that the tides have raised, raised, seven inches over seven decades, and that's just a fact. I know that some people get this, you know, I'm not talking about climate change, or sea level rise, or whatever. This is just the way it is. I know in the 30 years that I've lived in my home, 33 years, I think, that I've watched the low tides be higher and the high tides be higher, and these king tides that are coming in, so quite often, several times a year, Virginia Drive's completely underwater, and it's coming in through the stormwater drains. So as, what my point is, is that what we have now is a long-term problem. This is something that the Miami area has been dealing with for quite some time. They've spent a lot of money down in the downtown area, I think it's called the Beccle District, that they're trying to figure out how to basically be like Amsterdam and try to have dykes and build roads up, and this is what we're going to be forcing, kind of dealing with, and people like Keenan, you know, this is going to be something you're going to be looking at for the future, is when we replace roadways and pipe systems and stuff like that, we want to think, we want to think ahead on raising things up. And I'll give you an example. There's a new bridge coming in, they've already replaced one span of the Howard Franklin in Tampa Bay, and if you look at it, it's several feet higher than the old span, and then they're going to replace another span, and it's going to be the same thing, and this is a long-term interstate highway system that's taking into account sea level rise, and then the existing bridge in the middle, there's discussion of what to do with that, use the pilings or something like mass transit or something like that. This is where we need to be ahead of the game, recognize that it's happening, it's not political, and just plan for the future, that when we put money into our infrastructure, that we, and this is what the recommendation is from all the leaders in this, it's called resiliency, that when you put your money into the future infrastructure, that you take into account more sea level rise, the current sea level rise, and then another inch per decade. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Sanders?
Done. Oh, for... Where were you at? We have a city dock around Riverdance, River Song, right in that area, that has signage that says, daytime only, no overnight stay, or something like that, and the police department or Jim can answer that, and I'm getting complaints that boats are coming in there and staying for one or two nights or over weekend, making it kind of a personal dock. And I'm talking to the police chief, she says that they have no, it's their jurisdiction, but they have no authority to cite anyone doing that, and I want to have a discussion on that, and maybe a city attorney had to say something, ordinance has to be passed, or if we just want to let it go at that, but to do, we need to probably take a sign down.
Yeah, I saw the email.
Yeah.
That the chief responded and I I don't know, I assume she's saying we don't have an ordinance on that subject, so I have no ability to enforce it. But I have not looked into it yet.
Okay.
So if that's something the council wants to to look at, I think it, you know, this would be time for that discussion.
I'd like to have a discussion on it. I mean, this was, I don't know either way, but if if we're going to allow somebody to come in there and dock and stay the weekend, is there, I don't even have how much room there is there for how many boats, one or two, probably not very many.
Not a whole lot.
Not a whole bunch, but the people are complaining that they're coming in and just staying up, probably going up in an apartment or something.
People from the condos right there.
Yeah. Yeah, that's that's where it's coming from, yeah. And they they reached out to me and said, what can you do about it? And so I reached out to the police chief and Jim and the city attorney and said, I don't know, is it something we wanted them to do that? Well, obviously, we we didn't want them or we wouldn't have put signage up that way. So I don't, I don't have a preference either way, but I I know that they they probably can't, if some boats there all weekend, they can't, it doesn't make it friendly to the other neighborhoods to to just do it and be there a couple of hours or whatever, not overnight. And overnight presents a whole other problem.
Well, as it relates to the ordinance, I don't believe there is an ordinance specific to that. It it was built as a day dock specifically not to encourage anybody to stay there. It provides no utilities. So like a typical marina, boat pulls in, it has power, water, sewer, none of that is available there. So it wasn't, it was built a certain way to not encourage that. And we put the sign up. And for years, it it was just a pier out into the water because nobody ever used it.
Right.
So part of me is kind of happy to hear that somebody's using it, but.
Maybe it's not an issue. I don't know. I just want to bring it up for discussion. Like I say, I don't have a personal preference either way, but I'm just getting complaints on it, so. Does anybody have opinion, Mr. Bird, do you have an opinion?
Yeah, I, you know, I agree. I remember when we came about with the Riverwalk and it was supposed to be that, a day dock, you know, where you can come into the city and park for a few hours and, you know, that was what it was. I I guess my understanding is that what it would take is an ordinance that would bring forth fines or whatever to change that to where people would just like parking.
I think we, as long as it's prohibited by ordinance, we could, we could enforce it in any manner that's provided in the code. So I think that's the question is, is it prohibited now? And if not, is that something?
I don't think it is now.
Okay.
My knowledge, but I would support, you know, if that's what we want it to be, going forth with the ordinance and it goes through the process, a public hearing and everything, and we go forward.
Scott, why don't you bring us back up? An ordinance to have the council look at that. It's, I mean, I've seen that a lot and it's not.
Yeah.
It's not a big deal, but if you have the ordinance, you can enforce it if it becomes a big deal.
Very good.
That's all I have.
Bird, what do you have?
Yeah, well, I got several. I don't know, I'll start with the, I wanted, I hate that Carl's not here, but I wanted to start some of the, I see you had your blue folder over there, planning director, you know, and trying to see, you know, what, how are we going to move forward with that process? Go ahead.
I just might mention that Carl.
Oh, under your business?
Well, no, Carl did mention to me about the planning director process. And he asked if it could possibly come forward today. What he was suggesting, I believe he had distributed the applications to everyone, so he was wondering if you would all gather four or five of the top choices, provide them to me, or we could give them to HR, do a little bit of a vetting. They can reach out to those folks, see if they're still interested and get the process going that way if if you would like.
Yeah, I I just, I I was wondering about discussion because I did mark about I have five. And, you know, I'd like to, you know.
We can collect those if you like.
Go forward and, you know, I think if we could do that, hopefully, we can, you know, touch, reach out to those individuals and come up with some that we can interview and start the process going because I still, I know we've talked about it a few meetings ago, but, you know, the if we can take a couple of hats off of somebody's responsibilities here, you know, it'd be a a great thing to do and and which brings also economic development director, you know, that was the other discussion I wanted.
He mentioned the same thing about that.
Right, you know, and but I know this, we have, we can go ahead. I have my my five already. I can give them to you or whomever today.
For the planning director and then if you all were interested in advertising again for the economic development director, I believe it was probably two, three years ago that we collected applications. We could certainly reach out to those people again, see if they may be interested at this point. We can re-advertise for that and see what we get if if you're, if you all are interested in moving forward that way.
And I I think it's it's two things because and we have to look out and we we look ahead of everything and we're looking at election if the referendum, you know, happens. So, you know, and trying to, you know, you know, given that choice, it's going to be a huge responsibility. And I just don't see someone wearing the hat of planning director, economic development director and city administrator. And it, so as soon as we can get that process to to go, the better. And I think economic development, I've seen cases throughout the state where it could be either an individual or you've had consulting companies that took over the responsibilities and handled that too, if you didn't come up with the person that soon, so. But just open for a discussion on that, those two things.
Yeah, thank Harold. I think Sharon, are you aware, I just counted, there's fifteen, and I know I've talked to Carl about this several times. I think he's already weeded through and eliminated quite a few to the more qualified.
Well, there were some that he received that he did not give you copies of.
Right.
That were just completely not qualified for the position, quite frankly.
Yeah, I have that file and I pass it on to the, I think there's only, he didn't make copies of it. I have that file and I'll.
No, no, I'm, because I.
I just provide it to Mr. Bird or you next because he wants those back.
Okay, well, and my my point was, I already trusted Carl that he could weed down to the most, the most qualified. So the fifteen that we're looking at are the most qualified. So that's the only point I wanted to make.
Well, you need to look at the others too, but.
Okay.
Just thumb through them.
Absolutely.
Because there's some being that it's pretty impressive, but.
Okay. Well, he said in the others, there would be some that might even fit into, say, economic development.
Something else, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's some, there's some pretty good candidates there.
Or or an inspector or something like that.
While we're on that is, and I hate to broach this, but do you have any desire to have a HR director?
Well, I, you know, I, my opinion right now, my urgency was to.
Understand.
Look at those two.
Right.
And then as far as a decision, we've been there, you know, in the past, and it was sort of to the point we're at right now, so, you know.
I I started to mention it that because it's.
Yeah.
If there's no desire, then there's no desire.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just, I just want to state that I I've looked closely at all of them. I'm, I'm prepared to to make a motion to vote on somebody today. He's local, he has served on county boards, he's well aware how governments are run. I I believe he's, as I remember, might even be a licensed architect, I'm not sure. But I think it's important that we have a department head as soon as possible in that department. There's some issues that right now that are sitting out there that need to be resolved. So whatever y'all want to do, but if you want a motion, I can make one today, right now.
Well, I'm not prepared to vote today. I I I know who you're talking about, I've looked at it, but I'd like to have a little bit more time. But I I think we, I think we're close to pulling the trigger on this, yes. And I don't disagree with you, I just, I just handed the file and I need a little more.
Okay, well, if it's a general consensus that you don't want me to make a motion, I won't, but I.
Well, I I think my my opinion, I think when you look over the the applications there, I, there's there's probably the same individual, I'm quite sure, that I have, you know, rated pretty high. So, you know, but today, you know, it's one of those things, we we talk about, you know, trying to, you know, make good decisions for the city of Bradenton. And I would rather, I I put it this way, I would not mind it being put on the agenda and the very next meeting, we go ahead and do it. Pull the trigger. So, you know, today, I, you know, I would rather not. And that's been everything. I I try to, you know, make sure that it's something that nothing else is, it's an agenda item and we we, you know, we go forward at that point, so.
Well, and and I I have to apologize that I took my wife on a well-deserved vacation and came back with a broken wing, so I'm I'm a little behind schedule right now, but I.
You didn't treat her right if you if you went with her.
I'm not telling anyone how it got broken. That's not.
So, yeah, I'll I'll have my five and hopefully, I'd love to, you know, by the next meeting, have it an agenda item and we, you know, do all, and let's let's hire someone. I think it's the same person, I, you haven't, and I don't want to get into a name per se, but I'm I'm pretty sure it's the same one from the way you described the resume.
I'm happy to coordinate between you all to keep you within the sunshine.
Okay.
The what?
I'm happy to coordinate if you would like between you all.
Thank you.
Well, then I just make a motion and let them vote it down, then they know who I'm voting on.
The the other thing is sort of, I guess, an update as far as, and I'm sure it's going to be under somebody else's business, the COVID nineteen and any procedure issues as far as the opening of City Hall, what are we looking at? Everybody else, you have other municipalities and counties that are looking at some face mask requirements and just sort of a discussion of where we're at with a lot of that and as far as the city.
Some cities have opened and and then reclosed.
Right.
Because we're not out of the woods on this thing yet. So we've been very, very cautious at City Hall about doing that.
Great.
We just had a police officer and dispatcher both tested.
I saw that email. So it's because I do get calls as far as anticipation, we're just don't have any, say, anticipation of, say, August at this time.
We have been watching the numbers. As you know, we were getting close to wanting to open our doors. We were hoping to install some sneeze guards and things, the last minute things that we have to add to the lobby to make sure our citizens and our employees are safe. That hasn't happened yet, but it's very close. And then the numbers started going up dramatically. And I will not lie to you, we have a lot of employees who are very concerned about it. I had started bringing in folks that had been telecommuting, bringing more people in to start working in the offices again, and I've reversed course on that with the numbers going up so much. Telecommuting is already in place, it seems to be working very well. So I I'm just in the abundance of caution, sending everybody back to that, to that way of doing things, at least until we get direction from you all or or we see the numbers starting to come down a little bit again. We're seeing that the numbers are really strong in the twenty-five to thirty-four's, which covers a lot of our employees. And so the folks at risk now are, it's a greater number than were before. We do have some employees who have tested positive. It is, it is very concerning to the rest of the folks here. We're following all of the social distancing, we've distributed more disinfectant than you can imagine, but we're all interacting still. And to introduce the public in that as well is going to just add another dimension of it, so.
Yeah. And I, you know, don't get me wrong, I I'm not pushing to open up soon or anything, but a lot of us get caught. We get calls from residents, everything from, you know, public works to City Hall and the when are we going to go back to doing things to, you know, the way we're used to? And so that we have some sort of idea to give those individuals that give us a call or email.
We thought we had a date, yeah.
Right.
Until the numbers started going crazy and then we had to back down off of that. And I certainly encourage anyone who is not getting the service that they believe they should be out of our building for whatever reason, please let me know because right now we feel like we're doing a pretty good job meeting all of the needs. But if there are specific people that need some help or are evidently, here's one. If there's specific people who need some help or something that we're not providing that you feel like we need to be, certainly we can retool things a little bit.
Okay. All right.
It's a tough call. I, you know, we, we want to do everything for the citizens, but we also have to protect our employees because once they go down, you know, I was talking to IT yesterday, there's nine people in a very small room. If they start going down and we lose IT service, we're in a world of hurt here right now. So I have to spread those folks out, do some telecommuting, just so if one of them gets it, they haven't infected the other eight. It's a, it's a real balancing act.
Okay. All right, one last one is more of a, I guess, a legal question. And I got your your emails for is, I call it the, and please understand me, it's it's nothing, you know, that is going to affect anything presently. But I think the city needs to be aware in the future as they they start looking at the election process. And that question, and I call it the residency loophole. Could you, where are we with that? Can we require another form? I know that we have forms as far as signatures that are different from county. So is that something in the future that the city can look at because there's, you know, I really call it that because there's nothing other than a word of mouth. And this came from, I want to, you know, let the rest of the council know, it came from a citizen that accuses of not doing it and come to find out we don't have a process in place to do this, so.
Right, so Councilman Bird asked the question, which was, who verifies residency on candidates to city office? And the answer essentially is is no one. It is, you know, the the process is set up, and this isn't just with the city, it's the same for your county and state elected officials, candidates as well. The process relies upon the affidavit of the candidate to say that they meet the qualifications. So unless there's a challenge to that, there is no independent verification on the front end of the residency requirement.
The reason I I bring that up, we talked about it when we went through charter review. And I know there was talk about Palmetto had something in place, it say it was a year out, I believe. I'm not sure what they're saying. But it has to be something in place, how do they check it? It's not by oath of office or, you know, so it's just something for, you know, discussion and it has nothing to do with right now because we don't have anything in place. So, you know, I don't want anybody, I think it's something that as you look to future city elections, you might want to be mindful that you 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 might want to consider, you know, having something in place.
Doesn't that responsibility fall with the supervisor of election?
No.
It does.
No, it does not. But my, the legal opinion I got.
The the supervisor of election has been charged with conducting the city's elections. But by law, and they, so they serve as the qualifying officer for the candidates, but by law, the qualifying officer does not look behind the documents that are presented. They're, they're simply, it's a ministerial act on their part. They're, they're just there to check the boxes, make sure you submitted all the documents appropriately, but they don't independently verify the qualifications.
But they would if there was a complaint, wouldn't they?
Yeah, yeah. I think.
Yeah, I, to be honest, I don't know what the process would be if there were, if somebody raised a complaint as to whether or not a candidate was qualified, I don't know what approach the supervisor's office would take with that.
Scott, could I ask you? So since the, since the supervisor of election basically works, I'll use the term subcontract to the city of Bradenton to conduct our elections, could we not just make a resolution that we want him to check for residency? And, I mean, it's just, I'm, I'm not saying it just out of curiosity, can it, can that be done or does it need to be ordinance or what?
Right.
What would the process be?
Well, I'm, I'm not sure because part of the, part of the. Well, I'm, I'm not sure because part of it, part of the question is, is it something that's been preempted? Because, you know, we have this election code and so with municipal elections, certain elements of it are preempted. So that would be something that we would have to look at if it was something-
And I'm not talking about right now. I'm talking about for the future. Because we did talk about this in charter and I said we could probably clean this up through the mechanism we have.
Correct, correct. And, uh, so if that was something that the city wanted to look at, that would be the first thing that, that I would look at is, do we have the ability to do that if we wanted to have them, you know, verifying residents on the front end? Or other qualifications?
We could try it and see if it works. And that's, like I say, that's for our future. I think if, um, as, uh, the question came up, if anything going on right now, it would be, I believe it would be within the, uh, any candidate that, uh, chose to do so would have to, you know, do it and, uh, do a complaint, which is something, uh, I know I've never done in, in my history and, uh, don't want to start making a case of it now, but, uh, it needs to be something that, uh, uh, as a local government, if it's a loophole there, you know, you try, you need to try to make sure that, uh, you know, uh, it's somewhat taken care of, so.
I, I know, but it, it's a point and I'm not sure how far up it goes. I know that there's been state officers that have, well, I know one in particular that used to live over in the east coast and moved to the west coast just, just to run for office. And literally was still, still had property over there. So it's not just local.
Okay, nothing else?
I don't have anything else for the good of the order. Ms. Bochamp, do you have any department head report?
I do have a couple of things, actually. It turns out Mrs. Barnaby is available 9:00 AM Friday for the oath of office, if that works. Any feedback?
Yeah, I'm available.
That's good.
Yeah, it's great.
Okay, we'll go ahead and, and plan it for then, here in the council chambers.
9:00 AM?
9:00 AM, 9:00 AM. And the other thing I wanted to confirm, the workshop for July 1st and turning that into a special meeting so that you could all look at the 60% drawings with Kimberly Horn and have a presentation on that and accept those. The reason we're trying to move that along is on July 8th, I believe they've scheduled your construction manager presentations. And so they'd like you to see the 60% drawings before you actually look at the construction manager. So if we could do the first at 9:00 AM for a special meeting for that.
Yeah, uh, my question, um, so that's to, to look at the drawings from Kimberly Horn?
Kimmy, yes.
And that-
They would make a presentation to you, which was scheduled for today, but they were unable to make it.
So that's just to approve their drawings?
Yes, and looking for feedback again.
Is that right?
Oh.
I will not bid for 10, I think.
Okay.
So, so that's all we'll be doing is approving the drawings so that they can go out to bid?
Yes, for the construction manager. That's the next step is to pick the construction manager and those presentations are the following week. So you really need to see what the plans are for the park before you, you should, you select the construction manager.
Right, okay. Well, I could tell you, I'm going to be here from now on. I'm not going on any more trips. I can't afford it. My question was going to be, do we want to limit it to just that or do we want to leave it open if anything comes up in the meanwhile?
Well, if it's a special meeting, we can certainly put other things on the agenda.
I think we should do that.
Okay.
We're in the middle of a pandemic issue. You might have some-
I heard. But we would need that agenda pretty quickly if you have other items you would like to add.
Mr. Gallo, were you going to be gone the whole week or do you?
No, just that day. Yeah, I have an appointment and if, and if the gentleman shows up at the right time, I can make it to the meeting, but, uh-
It doesn't have to be 9:00 if you would like to make it a different time.
Would you want a different time or date?
Well, I don't know exactly what time. He said he'd be there in the morning. It's something that I have to have done at my house, so I have to be there.
Okay. Something we need to approve, I'm, I'm asking you, would you like us to change a time and date?
Well, that's up to y'all. I mean, I'm, I'm going to live with whatever y'all want, want done anyway. I mean, I'm not going to be around here.
So we'll do it that time.
9:00? Okay, and then finally I had, uh, if you'll allow me a few minutes, I, I had done some research for Councilman Sanders. Um, he had requested some information about YouTube meetings and, and showing the video of our, our meetings on YouTube. And so, uh, I've worked with IT. We've done some research on how this would work and I'd like to report to you now what the process would be and see if you're interested in moving further. What happens is M E T V films our meetings. We would take that film and make it into a digitized format, which is appropriate for YouTube. We would send it to a business that actually does closed captioning because the reason obviously we've had trouble with this in the past is that we have to have, meet ADA requirements and have things closed captioned. We found a group that will do the closed captioning in a couple of days. We sent them one of our meetings. They did it. It seemed to work pretty well. Um, they charge a dollar 25 a minute and the meeting we sent them was about $200. And then we set up a YouTube channel for the city of Bradenton government and we would upload it to that. There's no cost for the YouTube channel, so it looks like the cost would just be for the closed captioning of the meeting. We would, you'd have your meeting on Wednesday. We would look to send it to the closed captioners for the two-day turnaround. When we would get that back, we would review the file for accuracy and we'd probably have it on YouTube, probably Monday or Tuesday, I'm guessing, of, of following the meeting. We would turn off the comments on the YouTube channel so we can't get into a back and forth dialogue with people who are commenting and making remarks about what have happened at the meeting. Uh, they could still do a thumbs up and a thumbs down, but, but there would be no dialogue. And that's a concern with us with social media about creating public record and all of those kind of things. So we would, we would turn off the comment portion of it. If you look at city of Sarasota, they've got the same thing. They've turned off the comments on theirs too. They don't show their council meetings, but they've got individual council people making one-minute videos and things, PSA kind of things that they've done theirs for, similar kind of setup. They allow for analytics, so we would know the number of views. We would know how long each person that was viewing it actually watched it in terms of minutes. So you'd get the feedback that way about the interest in the meetings. Um, we would take it, uh, we would create a link. So Jeannie would put it on our website, on our city documents page. You would have the agenda to a meeting, the minutes to the meeting, and then a link to the meeting that would take you directly to it on YouTube. So that's about how it works in a nutshell, real quickly. Again, the cost seems to be, I would guess, at the most, 250 or so. The longer the meetings go, the longer, the larger the cost would be. But that seems to be the only cost that we would have other than just manpower getting it actually done. So we can go ahead and do that. We could do it for past meetings. We could start at some point going forward. I'd want to get a motion from you all that this is something that you would like us to take on. And the only other-
It's not going to be live, Sharon?
It will not be live. This is not live streaming.
Why wouldn't we just put those links on our website? Then it costs us nothing.
Right.
Then instead of going to YouTube, just get-
You can do that in class.
YouTube provides the functionality for us to have such a large video file available for people to look at.
So our IT department cannot make that file to put it on our website?
No, this is really the best way of doing it and managing the process. This is really the best way to go about doing it. YouTube is built for this kind of activity. And, and our, our gov office website is just not built for that activity. This is the best way. The link will go right from our website, right, right to YouTube. There will be no signing in or anything like that. I don't believe, um, it would be pretty simple.
Now, we've, we've talked about this before, but the ADA requirements were stopping us.
Right, and we now have a company that will do the closed captioning. And we have the ability, when they send it back to us, if the closed captioning doesn't actually meet what was said or if they've misidentified someone, we have the ability to go right in and edit it, so it will be a higher quality. The one thing that they warn about, and I'll just tell you, two people talking over the top of each other creates havoc for somebody who's trying to do closed captioning, so.
So, so it's a bit-
You may see some inaudibles when you all are-
So it's also a behavioral tool, right?
I just had to mention it.
Thanks, I needed that.
Not, not directed anywhere.
Do I have to sign affidavit that I will not do that?
A models release or something like that.
You just won't be heard. I, thank you very much. I asked for this some time ago and because a lot of news organizations have approached me saying, why aren't we doing it? It's relatively cheap and then I can, I don't have to, you know, make the visitations to the city council. I can just watch the YouTube and, and go forward with that. So I think it's a very important tool, especially in this day and age. So I would, uh, I'd like to make a motion that we, um, uh, do this, uh, for all, uh, future meetings. And if you want to amend that to go to back-to-back meetings, that'd be fine, but I, I think future forward, we need to do that.
It would only be your meetings that are televised.
Right, and, and only, and only city council meetings. I don't know if there's a necessity for the CRA meetings. I don't think there is. And unless we start getting larger requests, I would say just, just city council meetings. So that would, that would lower the cost, you know, so for example, today, we, we've had about two and a half hours. So it would, it would lower the cost. I don't think CRAs are, are, are necessary at this point in time. I haven't had anybody that's really wanted it. I need a second.
Second.
You have a motion in a second to move forward?
Oh, man.
Yeah.
On the YouTube?
Um, so Sharon, I just, I did a rough estimate. We're talking six to 10,000 a year for the whole.
That sounds about right.
Okay.
Yeah.
We have a motion in a second. Any more discussion? Eric Nunn, let's vote. Board three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Five?
Yes.
One.
Yes.
Motion is approved for a zero. Run with it.
Will do. And just to add some more clarity, we always get a DVD with the video of the meeting right after the meeting and we get a lot of public requests for those and we make copies and give them out at, at request. So this is not the only way to watch a, watch a video, but this will be an additional way. Thank you. That's all I have.
Uh, chief, anything, chief? Anybody else? Scott? Anybody else have anything?
Yeah.
He's already talked.
Oh, yeah, I, okay. I forgot.
Anybody else have anything for the good of the order? Were you all done? Anything else?
No.